I'd like to call the public hearing to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferrari?
Here.
Mrs. Taliani?
Here.
Mr. Murva?
Here.
Dr. Lynch?
Here.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Here.
Mr. Pacetto?
Here.
Mr. Sarver?
Here. The purpose of this budget hearing is to provide any member of the public an opportunity to ask questions or comment on proposed amended FY 2023 LPHS district budget. Does anyone from the public wish to comment or ask questions on the budget? Hearing no questions, ask for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murva?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting for June, uh, June 21st, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferrari?
Here.
Mrs. Taliani?
Here.
Mr. Murva?
Here.
Dr. Lynch?
Still here.
Mrs. Alcorn? Mr. Pacetto? Mr. Sarver?
Here. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to welcome everyone this evening on this nice, cool, June evening. And watery.
And watery.
All right, we'll start with approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, uh, May 17th, 2023. Any motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murva?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Next on the agenda is, um, recognition and comments from visitors. I will tell you that this is the highlight every month for me, to strut our stuff, you know, to show what our young people and staff have done, and I, I can't be more proud of you, I'll tell you that right now, because the things you do and go through are amazing to accomplish your feats. And first of all, before we get to the honorees, I would like to congratulate and thank the parents and guardians, because without you, you know, getting into the practice, having meals after practice, making sure they make certain, I mean, it's, it's amazing the impact, the influence you have on the young people of our district, and I'd just like to give you a round of applause. Now for honorees, uh, when I call your name, uh, please, we have a certificate for you, please come up, meet the board, and don't hustle out of here, because we're gonna get pictures after we get through everything. All right? First of all, uh, girls track, Elizabeth Sines. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Head coach, John Beatty? John, congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice job, coach.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Congrats, coach.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Assistant coach, Madeline Pillar? Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Sarver.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And assistant coach, Dan Burkhardt. Congratulations, Sarver.
Thanks, John.
You've had quite a nice first year here.
Raising the bar too high. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And ju- just to recap, uh, Elizabeth ran the 100-meter hurdles and finished 14th overall in the state. Uh, for boys tracks, the qualifier, Richie Santiago. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Uh, head coach, Adam Spencer, is not here this evening. Assistant coach, David Spudick, is not here this evening, but assistant coach, Jose Medina, is here this evening. Congratulations, Jose.
Nice job. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, coach.
Great job. And Richie qualified for the state in the discus throw and finished 29th overall in the state. Uh, boys tennis state qualifiers. Daniel Santoy?
Nope.
Not here. And Andrew Bolis also is not here. But we do have head coach, Aaron Gunther.
Mr. Gunther is also a brand-new dad.
Congratulations.
Hank, congratulations, yes.
Well, double congratulations.
I'm not ready.
Yeah, many congratulations.
Boy, you're a girl.
Uh, girl.
Girl.
So, showed the coming to LP in 14 short years.
And playing tennis.
Assistant coach, Kevin Kavanaugh. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I won't hug it out, Kevin.
Congratulations.
Hug it out?
How's your day been?
Yeah, Dick, you know, just like...
Yeah.
Yours probably too.
Yeah, you look up at the clock and it's like, oh, it's, it's already four o'clock.
All right, there's no public comment. So next is finance. Any motion to approve the bills and payroll, uh, for LP Township High School?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murva?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve, uh, the LP area career center bills?
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murva?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the payroll report?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murva?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the financial records as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Murva?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Under correspondence, um, we have a thank you letter from Mrs. Cheryl DePape, uh, for the Board of Education donation to the LP Educational Foundation in memory of Mr. Jacob Eutis, son of Mrs. April Eutis. And we also received a thank you card from Mr. Tony Sparks, uh, for the Board of Education, Dr. Robleski and Mrs. Reva, for appreciation of the retirement gifts and celebration for his final board meeting. Uh, next on the agenda is the committee reports, uh, Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Ferrari.
Uh, Building and Grounds Committee met on Monday afternoon. Uh, we discussed a number of items, uh, the storm drainage piping repair in the east building, uh, the bids came in higher than anticipated, and therefore, there's gonna be a slight delay as we have to go back to ISB to get approval for the additional funding. Dolan Building elevator, elevator repair project, so far, uh, at, at least as of Monday, there were no bids received as yet. Uh, summer projects, uh, sports complex is coming along, uh, there are a number of change orders that will be, uh, on the agenda tonight for, uh, approval. Uh, but as far as the progress goes, everything seems to be moving forward. The, uh, tennis courts were slightly behind, but there's still a couple months of the summer to go, so they might be able to catch up. Auto shop phase two, uh, it's coming along, the asbestos abatement is scheduled to take place after the Fourth of July. They're anticipating that the, uh, project will be done before school starts. Nurses office renovation, uh, is underway, uh, furnishings are currently on order. Stadium concrete repairs, Leginski is going to be doing that work. They're anticipating a completion by the middle of July, which will give time for the concrete to cure and then the painting to be completed before the season starts. The problem with the lights and banner arms in the, uh, east gym parking lot, we're waiting for a callback and an inspection to see why some of that equipment failed, so that's on hold. The Canterbury Tales mural has been completed, uh, it's been cleaned and touched up. Uh, there's a discussion about putting up a plaque in recognition of the artist who did the work.
The original work, right?
The, the restoration, the repairs.
Restoration.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, the bike rack, uh, installation has been completed and it's out there on Charter Street. There was a brief discussion regarding, uh, uh, naming for the baseball field being constructed currently.
Actually, if we could maybe expand a little bit, you know, on, on that as well in terms of just for the, the, the full, I know, I know it's in the report and it's in, in, in my report as well.
Uh, there was discussion about naming the new baseball field in honor of Coach Hubie Sarver, longtime baseball coach here at LP. I know he was coached when I was a student and probably several others who were on the board here also. And, uh, let's see, under other, get the bifocals on here, can't read my own writing, um, the work on the, uh, the power equipment that's coming into the ACC from the donations we received from, uh...
Kowalski.
Kowalski, uh, that's, that's ongoing, Sanders, Tablestahs, 3D printers, welding equipment, it's, it's, it's flowing in, there's like a half million dollars worth of equipment has been donated from that gentleman, it's pretty incredible.
Yeah, Mr. Ferrari, I could add to that, I had a conversation with Mr. Kowalski today. Um, he is, uh, putting in another check for a hundred thousand dollars, uh, in the mail, um, for the district, and shared with him too that we're having conversations, um, with Mrs. Lori Johnson, we recognized, uh, recently, uh, she has a, a proposal, a vision to create an outdoor playground, um, for the kids in the early childhood program, and so we're, uh, working on with Mr. Kometz's office to put together the plans for that, and, uh, Mr. Kowalski has, has expressed, uh, a desire to, to assist with that project as well. So, it's, uh, very exciting.
And, uh, there was some discussion also about, uh, use of, uh, solar panels, uh, not on the, uh, roof of the, uh, parking garage, but, uh, for other purposes.
Yeah, to support Mr. Dawson's class from a curricular standpoint. Yeah.
And, uh, that's it, the only real action item is the change orders involving, uh, the sports complex, uh, a couple of them have to do with fencing, another one has to do with, uh, the flagpoles, and we'll be getting to that.
If I, and if I could just add to the, the, for the addition to, for the, uh, uh, the additional funding for the, um, the, um, storm drain, uh, repairs as well, and then, um, the other thing too, I know you, you mentioned too, uh, Mr. Ferrari, that, you know, we had, we had the one bidder, um, uh, for that, and so on, on the agenda as well is the, uh, is a motion to, kind of tied in with the approval for the amendment is, once that's approved, is to then award the contract to, to team and builders contingent on the...
We can award it without the funding?
We can, we can. Well, no, no, it, it's contingent.
Contingent.
It's contingent, it's contingent. You know, this also ensures too that it doesn't require a special meeting to come back to have to, uh, to, to award the contract.
And then that's it for Building and Grounds.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Um, the finance committee report will be given by Dr. Robleski this evening.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Sarver. Uh, finance committee, uh, also met on June 13th, um, following Buildings and Grounds. Um, we had updates on the monthly financials, uh, 91.7% of the way through the fiscal year, uh, which would be the end of May, um, everything is, is, is on target where we, uh, expected, uh, both revenue and expenditures, uh, to be. Uh, we also discussed the, uh, proposed amended budget. Um, there is really nothing of substance that has changed from last month's, um, overview for the, uh, the agenda, so we are, uh, recommending to, ask the board to, uh, approve, uh, the amended budget, and once that's done, then we'll be able to, to resubmit that to, uh, ISB, um, our auditors and the, uh, the county, county offices. Um, we presented a, a proposal, which is another action item, uh, it's the, uh, call it the Cavalier Paid Internship Student Teaching, uh, Proposal, uh, Program. The, the intent behind this is it's, it's a recruitment retention tool, um, to be able to, uh, put ourselves as a district in a better position, stronger position to, uh, attract and retain quality candidates. It would not be utilized, probably on a regular basis, but it would be utilized in those situations where we know we have a quality candidate and we have an opening. Uh, could be, uh, you know, we've been utilizing permanent subs the last couple of years, uh, we could have a candidate could emerge from that, um, it could also be a paraprofessional in the special ed department that would be interested in going back and getting his or her teaching certificate. The idea behind this is that we have flexibility as a district to pay them during their, either their internship or their student teaching experience, and what we're proposing, and a number of other districts are now doing this, is to make a, a commitment, uh, to the candidate, the candidate to us, that as long as he or she successfully fulfills the internship and our student teaching experience, that we would then recommend that person to a, and they would accept the, the, the open position. In exchange for a minimum two-year commitment to the district, that they will not look to leave during that time period, with the understanding of the agreement that if they were to leave, they would have to repay what we paid them for the internship. I'm recommending that we utilize the BA step one, um, whatever the year the contract would be, um, as the, the, the salary for payment, that this would not include any benefits. Um, uh, I guess if, we, we may have to maybe reconsider that if we have a paraprofessional that's currently on staff, that we, we would cross that bridge, you know, when, when we would get there, but we don't have any circumstances, uh, like that. Um, but we, we feel that this would be a, a tool to, uh, to be able to retain and attract people and not worry or have the fear of them even in the, in a year or so to consider leaving, uh, and the committee is recommending the, the board to, to approve that recommendation. Uh, our committee also reviewed the, um, uh, change orders, um, uh, from the sports complex, and I know Mrs. Sarver's gonna go over those, you know, individually when you, when you get to that part of the, the agenda, um, uh, so I won't, I won't repeat any of that, other than that normally when you have projects like this, that you, you have a 10% set aside contingency, uh, for this. We are more than halfway through, um, the project, and the, the total amount of these change orders represents 1.2% um, of, of the project, which would be only, only 1.2% of that 10% contingency, that's, that's very good. And then, uh, I am seeking authority, uh, to pay July bills, uh, since we are not going to be meeting, the committee is recommending this, um, with Mrs. Whalen's assistance, um, kind of calculating what we expect, the construction, renovation, projects, uh, total expenditures coming in, as well as our normal bills and payroll, would be to authorize, uh, payment of bills up to $4 million. And, um, once the bills are, are completed, I would have that report, we will email that to the board, uh, so that way there you will have access to see what we're, what was being authorized. That's all I have, unless there are questions or if any other member of the committee has anything else to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, policy committee, Mrs. Alcorn?
Thank you. We met Monday, um, the policy was very short, there was absolutely no changes in the, um, items presented, um, the meeting was historic, it lasted five minutes, so we were...
That's pretty good. That's really good.
We did well. There was one item which Dr. Robleski asked that we pull from our recommendation for approval of these, and we're not going to approve them tonight, but it's 6.40 curriculum development. As I understand this, um, the district has done their own curriculum development policy, and, um, they are going to go back and revisit that and tweak it and update it and present it in August, uh, to be, and then we can, um, approve, um, this group of policies.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, administrative reports, superintendent, Dr. Robleski.
Uh, just, uh, a, a couple, uh, items to update the board on. Um, we are, uh, district audit, the dates have been set, um, for this, uh, summer and fall, July 10th, our auditor, uh, will be here on site for the, uh, preliminary intake of, of information, and then August 24th, no, 21st through the 24th will be, they'll be onsite, um, it'll probably be a combination onsite, remote, or at this point, is it all gonna be onsite?
Those days, it would be all onsite.
Okay, all right. And, and our, it is our hope then to be able to have the final report, um, on either the October or the November, uh, regular board meeting. Uh, Mrs. Whalen and I are continuing to work on the district budget, uh, Mrs. Whalen has, um, had all of her meetings with, uh, the division chairs, administrators, um, so we're at that point now where she, where we're now gonna begin to go over all of the, the individual items, um, in the revenue as well as the expenditure budget. We already had our, kind of a preliminary discussion on, on the naming of the baseball field, uh, it is the, uh, is the intent then, if I can also share, if I can maybe add to that, the committee was very, was unanimous, you know, in, in the, the, uh, support for the, the naming, but we wanted then to be able to make this a sort of the first announcement and, uh, provide members of the board time to, um, reflect on it as well. We'll have another file, a follow-up discussion at our next Buildings and Grounds meeting, and then the intent would be to have a recommendation for the board, um, at the, uh, the August meeting. So, we're, we're looking forward, uh, to, to moving forward with that. And then I had, uh, two FOIA requests that we received in the, since our last board meeting, both from the same, uh, entity, this was from local labs, um, we had a, a request for any records, uh, email correspondences with Lori's Children Hospital from July 1st, 2022 to the present day. As you can imagine, there's a lot of, um, confidential information with that, we relied heavily on Mr. Zukowski's office, who was very helpful, um, in making sure that information that was to be redacted was, was redacted, and, uh, we did ask for an extension of time, uh, to complete that request, and we, and we did respond though within the, uh, the, the appropriate amount of time. Then received another email, or another FOIA request from the same individual, um, this individual was asking if we had any contracts or agreements with any vendors that would be providing diversity, equity, and inclusion services from January 1st, 2019 to the present day, after your consulting with our, our appropriate staff members, we do not have any contracts or, or service agreements in regards to that. So that, I did respond to the, uh, to that request as well. That's all I have, unless there are questions.
Okay. Uh, the principals report, director of athletics and activities, and the director of area career center are in your packets. All right. Director of communications, Mr. Baker?
Hey, I'll try to keep it quick then. So, big pieces, um, as we talked about kind of before the meeting, we've really wrapped up all of the, the big streaming upgrades, the last piece of equipment came in, we did our last kind of official training day with Keycode, uh, staff here on site to go over a few extra things, also Mrs. Williams sat in on that, so she has a little bit of cross training, so if I get hit by a bus or something, or just need to take a vacation day, there's somebody else who at least knows the basis of how all this works. And otherwise, so then with that project kind of put to bed, uh, now we're kind of really kicking off, uh, the migration of, to the final site website system, so had our first kind of official kind of kickoff meeting with their team, uh, and it's, it's webinar yesterday, and, you know, just gonna keep rolling out over the summer as we make the transition, so, that's all, unless you have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to new business, uh, 10.1, any motion to approve FY 2023 amended district 120 budget?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murva?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the 2023, 2024 ACC joint agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the Cavalier Paid Internship Student Teaching Program proposal?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the authorized superintendent to approve July twenty twenty-three LP and ACC bills up to four million dollars?
So moved.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the authorized superintendent to pay lease FY twenty twenty-three fourth quarter bills not to exceed eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars?
So moved.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, excuse me. I'm good.
Any motion to approve the transfer of working cash fund interest to the Education Fund? This is an annual request.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the transfer to capital lease payment of two hundred and six thousand, fifty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents from the Education Fund to the Debt Service Fund? This is an accounting motion.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the Smith Health Life Safety East Gym Industrial Arts Building Amendment Number Twenty? Request for additional funds for storm drainage repairs, Amendment Number Nineteen, thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the reward Team and Builders' contract for steam storm drainage repairs? East Gym bid not to exceed sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, contingent upon ISB's approval of the Health Life Safety East Gym Industrial Edge Building Amendment Number Twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any approval? Any motion for approval of the following LP Sports Complex Phase Two change orders? A, Change Order One, Flag Poles, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. Change Order Number Two, Light Pole Upgrades for Cameras, twenty-five thousand dollars. Change Order Number Three, Additional Fence at Baseball and Softball Diamonds, sixteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Change Order Number Four, New Soccer Shelters for Home and Visitors, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. Change Order Number Five, Soccer Field Concrete, fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Change Order Number Six, which is the deduction, TIPS contingency, which is the deduction of seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. So, the total request is ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars, which we said earlier is one point two percent of the original contract value.
So moved.
Second.
Is that Mr. Ferrari? Okay, I'm sorry. Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the following Nurses' Office Renovation Change Order? Change Order Number One, casework revisions in Storage Room Corridor and additional, an addition of bathroom accessories in the Toilet Room, two thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
So moved. Second.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Event Emission Fees, which are no changes from last year?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Board Paid Holidays?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Okay, any approval of the FY twenty twenty-four District Consolidation Plan? Which is an annual motion and there's no change from this year.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Ten, ten point one five is the press policy issue. One hundred and twelve, which is the first reading, that is not an action item. Ten point one six, any motion to approve the resolution assuring reemployment for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year for ten-month employees?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes. Any motion to approve the following resignations as presented?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Ferrari?